Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Colacetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here. Next item is approval of minutes of the previous meetings of November 22nd, 2021, and the City Council goal-setting session from December 2nd and 3rd, 2021. Is there a motion for approval?
I move approval of the November 22nd, 2021 meeting and the City Council goal-setting sessions, December 2nd and 3rd, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, second by Jaya. Are there any substantive corrections? Okay, the Kirk, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Yes.
Mr. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Ms. Bishop.
Yes.
I have lost my step. Okay, Ms. Wilkin.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Bishop, I think I called you already.
Yes.
All righty.
That motion passes.
Yeah.
That's everybody, Phyllis?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, um, I don't believe there are any additions to the agenda. We'll move on to presentations and public input. The first is a presentation on empowering the community to combat community violence by First Followers. This was a request from council members Wilkin and Bishop. Would you like to introduce this? And is there anyone we need to promote to be a panelist?
Uh, yes and yes, thank you. Um, we have Karen here for our scheduled second presentation. We need Regina Parnell as a panelist. I emailed for me, Dr. Regina Parnell.
Okay. Any other panelists?
I think that's all, as far as I know. They can chime in if they need someone else.
Okay.
And, um, this is in light of some of our strategic planning and other motivations for partnering with community organizations to talk about community safety and addressing community violence issues. And so, thinking this is an opportunity to learn about these two great community organizations, hear what they're doing and what some of their needs or possibilities for partnering might be. Uh, my goal is just to lay out some ideas on the table in an effort to increase that community safety. And I hope that community and council members could also feel, um, inclined to bring ideas and presentations and that we can continue these kinds of conversations and getting these ideas going. Um, and so, we had scheduled first, um, for First Followers to go first with Regina and then CU Trauma and Resiliency Initiative. Does that still work for you guys? Okay, great, then I think we can, uh, let Dr. Regina Parnell take it away.
Great. And you'll have 10 minutes, please.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, uh, I would like to thank the mayor for this opportunity to come before the board to speak. Um, Grace, thank you for, uh, inviting us to come and talk about what we're doing within the community. Um, I would like to share my screen, so hopefully. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Um, H3, um, what we're providing is, what we're trying to provide is healing, to help those that have been harmed and impacted, to give our community hope. I am Dr. Regina Parnell, and I would be remiss if I did not give acknowledgement to the late, great Janice Mitchell, who I have worked behind and beside for the last 26 years in the Urbana area, because that's where I am housed, and that's where I've been since I moved to the community. Uh, Ms. Mitchell has done great work within a community. Her presence will be missed, so I give, um, all praises to her at this moment. Um, what we're talking about is trauma, and I'm sure everybody know what trauma is. It's an emotional response to a terrible event. Um, it leaves people with shock and denial typically. It's long-term, short-term impact on everyone that has encountered some type of trauma. We've all had the trauma-informed, um, training. And we usually go off a checklist, uh, the common emotional and behavioral response to trauma, the common response to physical, what it looks when we're physical, um, responsive to trauma and the emotional piece of it. What we don't talk about is that trauma is not a one-size-fit-all. We cannot look at, look at a person and say, "That person has been impacted by trauma." To be honest, Champaign-Urbana has been impacted by trauma. Every child within the community, because of the shooting and the community violence, has been impacted by trauma. Those that have, those preschool to high school to the elderly, our entire commu- community is being traumatized. So what we're, um, focusing on First Followers, we're using a socio-ecological theory, and it is a domino effect. When the individual is traumatized, then the relationships that they have with others are often traumatized, which leads into the community, which leads into a broader set of, uh, standpoint. But what we want to do is scale that back. We want to focus on individuals. We want to focus on those males 17 to 24. We want to provide them with an assessment with trained social workers, similar to what DCFS does when they do background histories on families. We want to sit with them for two to three hours to gain an understanding of who these young men are, where their background is from, what type of medical history they may have had, what type of trauma they may have had in their childhood, to the point they are that 17, 24 age range. Once we have that assessment by trained licensed social workers, we're going to do what they call wraparound services, and that's an evidence-based practice that we will provide them. Um, we would sit with them, pull all the community members with them, that they feel is a support system for them, and build that foundation for them, to connect them to the counseling, the, the, um, hobbies that they may have, and those individuals that have supported them throughout their lifetimes. From that point, we're going to do peer training. It's a program called Young Voices with Actions in St. Louis, and what they're doing is going through a CIVR, uh, program with these young men. It's a 12-week program. It's providing them with CIVR engagement, is making them leaders within themselves, and is making them peer mentors for those that's coming behind them. And once they complete the Young Voices with Action, um, curriculum, then we're going to do a workforce development. I'm sure some of you have seen the houses that the young men in our program are building. We want to give them a skill for a lifetime, something that they can do that nobody else can take from them, and try to balance them in a way that they can go forth to make a difference, not only within their community, but within the Champaign-Urbana as a whole area. And that is what we're proposing to do with, uh, males 17 to 24 that's actively engaging in some of the gun violence and community violence within our community. And if there's any questions? I see your mouth moving, mayor, but I don't hear you.
Happens a lot. Uh, are there any questions for Dr. Parnell?
Yes, ma'am.
Shonda.
Um, thank you. Uh, first, could you unshare your screen? Sorry, I like to see people when I talk. Thank you.
You like to see my smile.
Exactly. Um, is, is this a program that's already going?
Yes, ma'am. Where, there are some components, there are some components that we will be adding, if we're funded, but the workforce development and some of the, um, CIVR engagement we are doing, but not to a 12-week, uh, program, but we want to add that to it, as well as do that, uh, background assessment with the young men, just to gain an understanding of who they are as a whole. Because what we're doing is just get, most, most people are doing is just getting their names, their basic information, and pushing them forward, and not understanding who they are. And so, that's what we want to do. And with that assessment, after they complete that assessment, because it will bring up some trauma, we're connecting them for six weeks, uh, with a licensed social worker to help them process what they've been through, and then we'll move them to the next step.
And how are the young men doing, um, that are in, in the program you have set up now?
They're doing fabulous. Uh, they are working, uh, what they're doing is gutting out some of the houses, uh, that we have contracts with, and they are remodeling, uh, those houses. We have one on Louisiana that they fully built. I can't think of the, uh, other street offhand, but they are doing great. We have them, um, when they're not working hands-on, we have them in the classroom, providing that social-emotional support to them. Uh, we have those community conversations with them also. So we're teaching them about, um, how to respond, how to communicate, how to process, what does mental health look like, what does trauma look like? And these are the, you know, we're not going in depth, but we are touching the surface with them now. Yes, ma'am.
Jaya, and then Sharice.
Um, can you talk a little bit about the, um, Youth Voices with Action program, why this particular program was selected? I know you mentioned something about kind of using an evidence-based approach, so I'd like to know a little bit more about what, what was the selection process for what you're proposing?
Well, um, I'm not sure if you guys know, but, uh, St. Louis is having a high rate, uh, rise in community violence also. And so, this program, they are connecting young people that are, uh, have been impacted or involved in the community violence within this program, and they are having success. What they're doing is called, uh, Protecting My Block. So they're building these young people and sending them back into their community as leaders of their neighborhoods to recruit other young people to come in and be a part of the program. So it's almost like, uh, Each One Teach One program that they're using, and it's an evidence-based program.
Thank you, Sharice.
Thank you for, thank you for doing this.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a, sounds like a, um, uh, a good start. Um, are these children, uh, receiving any kind of therapy?
And once we do the, um, background assessment, Ms. Sharice, then we will connect them to, uh, licensed clinical social worker for six weeks.
Does the social worker have, like, do they do psych- psychological services or anything?
Yeah, they're clinical social workers. Yes.
Okay. And, uh, my other question is, um, because my thing is also solving crime that is already taking place in that, which also makes a kind of a perpetual trauma. So, i- is this, uh, program at all going to help solve any of the, the crime that's that ta- that's taken place within Urbana?
I think it's going to take a collective number of programs to help solve, but what we're doing will help the, some of the young men that's within the program. So, you know, it's not a, as I said, it's not a one-size-fit-all, but the young men that have been through our program has been successful while they're with us. And what we're trying to do is to give them more services to help them understand what they're encountering, because I said, we are all traumatized by the things that's going on within our community. And if, as adults, if we're having a hard time grasping it, think about a child 17 to 24 that don't have those tools to even understand, and that's what we're trying to provide them, those tools, not only those physical tools, but those emotional tools as well.
Okay. Uh, Mary Alice, and then Grace.
Uh, thank you, Dr., is it Dr. Parnell, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Um, so you said that you have some of this program ongoing. How long has your program been, uh, active?
We have had Go Mad since 2016, and it's Go Make a Difference in Your Community is what it stands.
All right. And, um, so you also mentioned that you've had people finish your programs. Roughly, how many graduates have you had?
Um, Ms. Wu, I do not want to give you that number, because I don't know offhand. Um, but we, but we have, we have had some successful, we've had some to go and, um, find solid employment. Uh, we've had some to go to RoomFen, we've had a couple to do, um, CDL license, we've had some to enroll in community college, we've had some to work regular jobs, Car, Hospital, Craft, uh, the US Post Office. So we are connecting them, because we give them that resume building also, and communicate in interview skills.
It, it would be great if you could send us the number of graduates you have, when you have those numbers, and, and maybe include the number of people in Urbana, would be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We actually have one that's currently, uh, in, in our group from Urbana, that's the current one, and he has been in a program for a year and a half, and he's doing wonderful. So yes, we do have Urbana.
Grace, you had a question?
Yes, question, and I'll try and slide in a quick comment, that I, uh, helped with some of the Go Mad stuff a few years ago in their early stage with like gardening and sustainability and nerdy stuff like that. And I would just say that what I saw is the big difference that it makes having those personal relationships and trust, um, and that's what I see as a big difference versus some other programs that I've been a part of. And I think really, meeting these young people where they are and building those personal relationships and trust makes a huge difference that I've seen First Followers do like nobody else that I've been involved with. Um, so I think that really makes a big difference, and, um, yeah, anyway. And so, yeah. Uh, my question was, um, what are some of the biggest needs to expand the program? I think you mentioned funding, is that, is that?
Funding, funding is definitely one, um, that we need, especially with the stipends to give the young people, um, and that's a problem. Most of our funding come from Weyola, and they can only, uh, be in a program for so long within Weyola, then they, they age out, or they, um, overextend the hours that Weyola offers. Uh, funding for the social work services, funding, um, just to provide the support and services that they need. We don't, um, we have them most days, six to seven hours a day, and we cannot afford to pay them, uh, from funding that we have, because it would, um, empty our funding. But we need funding to help support the young men, to give them that, that stipend, to help them help their families. And when you are earning, you're feeling good about yourself, and that's that self-pride that we're trying to build into them, that they're coming out, doing something positive, and they can see it within the house, and then they're earning something to help themselves and their family.
Thank you.
I think we have time for one more question. Any further questions? Okay, well, thank you so much, Dr. Parnell.
Thank you.
For being here.
Thank you.
And presenting.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the, um, CU Trauma and Resiliency Initiative. Who's going to introduce this?
Um, I think just for the same kind of general introduction, getting new groups on the, uh, getting groups on the table, hearing what they're doing and, uh, what some of their needs might be. And so, we have Karen Sims from CU Trauma and Resiliency Initiative. I'm very excited to hear from her, so thank you for coming.
Hi, so thank you so much for the offer and invitation, and let me echo, uh, many of the things that Regina said. Um, First Followers is doing amazing work, and this is a collaborative effort and, uh, deeply respectful for, uh, Janice Mitchell's work in this community. So I get a chance to talk a little bit about some of the current, uh, work that is done to support survivors in our community who've been impacted by gun violence. Um, this work has had, um, many different shapes over the past four years. Uh, in the past year and a half, it has been completely volunteer-driven and, uh, unsupported by sort of formal funding sources, but I want to share a little bit about what we've been doing and the infrastructure we've built through the Community Violence Task Force, um, uh, so, so that you can see kind of how we've been providing support. So I don't know if everybody is aware, but there's a Community Violence Task Force that is coordinated through the Champaign County Community Coalition. So that group has been meeting for about three years, um, and it is a place where, um, different constituent groups who are doing work to address community violence come together, and this work around survivor support has come out of that effort. And so, you'll see many different people come to the meetings or are involved with us, um, to help out. Uh, and so, again, I can't stress enough that this work has been supported in large part by the community. Um, so, the, a couple of years ago, we were asked, sort of charged as a part of that task force, to come up with a centralized plan for survivors. And I will say, in complete transparency, we have never, um, been able to sort of meet the demands. So as, uh, the number of survivors, I continue to increase, um, we sort of maybe provide support for a third, a fourth of all of the survivors who've been impacted by gun violence. Um, but what we have created in conversations with Carle Hospitals, schools, local providers, is, is that, uh, families come in through sort of a centralized place. Um, and, uh, CU Try is one of those places where we get a lot of those referrals, um, that come in, um, uh, to the community. Um, and so, anybody can call, um, about a third of our referrals come from Carle, uh, another third of our referrals come from just, you know, moms, dads, people who've used our support, and then the other third of our referrals come from schools. Um, anybody who is impacted by gun violence, and so, we don't have a, uh, like a victim and offender continuum, it really can be anybody who's impacted by gun violence that's self-defined, can utilize us. Uh, and as Regina talked, uh, and so, I hate this word around assessment, but really, what it means is we listen deeply to needs, try to figure out where we can make a difference, try to make a meaningful difference, and sort of stabilizing families. A lot of times, what we're called to do is some basic crisis support around housing, um, or physical care, or sometimes emotional care, um, and so, just to know that that happens. This does not show up well, uh, but I know I sent the handout in advance, but this kind of gives you a sense of the flow. And for about, um, maybe a third of the people that we get referrals for, um, as Regina mentioned, we provide coordinated, collaborative, um, intensive, uh, team-building support. Um, we provide something called wraparound, uh, but a number of the people who we provide support to, we, um, just basically link to care, um, but we stay with them. We provide about 16 weeks, uh, concern for more or less of support. Again, we're using, uh, volunteers, and sometimes we're, we get a little bit of funding that allows us to, um, provide a stipend that allows for a facilitator to really kind of work with a family, particularly if they're complicated needs. Uh, and I would be remiss if I didn't give mad shout-outs to, um, Bend the Ark, Moms' Demand Action, many, many community groups who have, uh, again, uh, donated, contributed time, talent, and energy. Um, a lot of times, when we get connected to families, particularly families who are impacted by gun violence, they're unsafe at home, and so, we try to give them a comfort and care basket. We try to make sure that some of those basic needs, we've covered, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the, the, the services. So this year, um, we've had 47 referrals, um, from April of 2001 to date. Um, so that's just this year, and I have last year's numbers, and that's about 67, uh, 63 different individuals. Um, and so, in August of this year, because of the intensity of the referrals, this summer, we got like 35 referrals all at once, and it was a little bit overwhelming. Um, uh, the coalition set a meeting, and we sat down and met with the Youth and Family Peer Support Alliance, and they have agreed to sort of help us with and take the lead in providing support for, um, families, uh, where, like, with, with children, and, and so that they're sort of the primary lead for those. We still kind of help with the intake and the assessment process, uh, and the wraparound process, but they do the parent support, the, um, parent building, the, the, the skill building, the recovery, all of those things, and so, that's what we've been doing. So, some of the things that we do, uh, big, big issues is we provide temporary housing. Um, it is one of our biggest needs, and, uh, in our community, is many, many, many families who are impacted by gun violence can't go home or don't feel safe at home, and getting a stable placement is very difficult. So thanks to like, the township office and RPC, and again, many community partners, but also sometimes donors, we place people in hotels and, um, and other sort of short-term housing in a way to get them into more longer-term, uh, housing support. So that's a big need. We also do healthcare advocacy, so we work a lot with the social workers at Carle and local providers, because when we're working with gunshot survivors, sometimes they have wounds, um, and so, um, or can't return to work, or need help navigating different systems. We've had, um, a number of people who have been, um, I don't know if you, you know, right, like, there've been folks who, um, maybe have had long-term hospital stays and hospital placements, and have had how, family coming in from out of town and needed support for that, so we try to help with all of those things. Um, when needed, we connect people to formal and informal mental health services. I don't know if people know, but we have a mental health support network called Here for You, and those aren't formal necessarily providers. We use an evidence-based practice model called Psychological First Aid and Skills for Psychological Recovery that deals with a lot of the basic, uh, mental health needs that actually stabilizes folks, so that it actually reduces the need for long-term treatment. And, uh, we have a network of providers, uh, and people who are trained. We actually are finishing training eight new people right now. Um, we do a lot of referrals to lots of different stuff, um, and everything from sort of mental health support, like, uh, peer-based supports like GROW, to longer and more complicated sort of substance abuse services. Um, and so, I, right, like, all of this is super formal, but I will tell you sort of a, like, a de-identified story, as agnostic as possible, because it's a small town and, um, right, it's hard to sort of share publicly about people without them seeing themselves in the story. But, so the most generic story is, uh, you know, um, a mom will, um, be impacted by gun violence, uh, and, uh, she will not feel safe at, she will not feel safe at home. And so, you know, it's sort of making sure mom and kiddos are all, uh, well. Um, it's working with the schools to be sure that transportation is in place. Sometimes we pull together all of the school's sort of mental health providers and social work providers to build a village around, so that everybody has the seamless network of care. Um, we've been really fortunate that where needs exist across the community, social workers have teamed together to offer group-based supports, um, and to make sure that not only does that young, that one set of youth get support, but their entire network has been, uh, supported. And then we try to make folks' lives better, so, right? Um, so we always are prioritizing social connectedness, um, helping people be better, so we connect to, like, we have a couple of employment services who help our moms and families get back on their feet, if they've had housing, um, they've had employment losses and stabilization. Um, and a year, although many, many families are experiencing one of the most, um, impactful crises ever, uh, many of them are different, right? So that they might have free park services, so Urbana Parks has been phenomenal as a partner, so they'll give recreation and play, and we'll get books, and we'll do, and so, we really try to help promote healing and resiliency and recovery in a real robust way, not just symptom reduction. And that has been the critique, is, is that we can't necessarily serve everybody, because we're really trying to provide healing, um, and not just sort of Band-Aids approach. Um, so that is what we do. So I talked about our, our network, we call it Support for You. Uh, everything is free and confidential. Um, law enforcement has this, schools have it, public health has it, so we get this information out and about. So what we need, I'm going to be pretty quick. Uh, always, 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 I mentioned this has all been volunteer-based, and so, when people have critiques, we hear you, uh, but know that we are one volunteer at a time. We're all doing this over above other sort of requirements. Um, as always, and you'll hear this every different place, we need to improve our collaboration and our coordination. Uh, we always, always, always need more volunteers in so many different ways. Um, we, we definitely, one of the critiques that we've been hearing is, we need much more intensive substance abuse services, and we need more trauma-specific strategies, uh, to help people with, um, more complex issues like post-traumatic stress disorder, complex trauma, and we're working with the City of Champaign to do that. Um, I know that there's a Brews Blues and News event tonight talking about this, um, but we need far more. One of the things that we hear all the time is, um, we need far more pro-social skill-building activities. A lot of times, the, the activities just A lot of times the, the activities just serve sort of folks who've been identified as high need. But if you can think about a family, if you invest all of your time, talent and energy to one set of kids and you don't take care of the whole village, then other kids sort of show up as having needs. And so we need a lot more access to things that are community-based and local. Housing, we scream about every single meeting. Probably people are tired of hearing me scream about that. But we have a fantasy that one day we would have a short-term, safe, secure, private, longer-term, 45 days plus stable housing for families who've been dislocated because of housing. And it can't be something that is not healing. So it can't be like we're putting people and not, and again, I get crisis emergency housing services. But when you think about a family or a couple who's been dislocated by gun violence, putting them in a classical shelter is actually going to be another trauma. They actually need a stable place to recover, heal, where services push in, where wraparound services are there, where really if they have physical issues or emotional issues, they can get really the care that they need. Always vocational opportunities. We love, love, love First Followers for all that they do and how wonderful it is. And last but not least, and I know everybody feels this, but we need constantly people to hope that things can get better. Thoughts are incredibly creative. And if we sort of believe that this is hopeless and helpless and it won't get better and we give energy to focusing on the problem, not believing that we're a part of the solution, we feed into that feeling of hopelessness and despair. So that is sort of our little soapbox, but we've been chugging along over here trying our best. Not perfectly, but trying to do better.
You did tremendous work. Could you, both speakers, could you share your presentations? And we could get that incorporated into the meeting record, the PowerPoints. And are there any questions for Ms. Sims? Charisse?
Hi, Ms. Sims. I guess a question that I have for you is, oh, do you have services for, let's say, the person that has been directly impacted by gun violence, meaning they got shot? And had to spend so much time in the hospital or recovering that they could have possibly lost their, especially now with COVID. You know, been laid off from their job and are in danger of losing their, their home. What kind of services would you have for that type of person?
So yes, Ms. Charisse, thank you for asking. So we do, we, again, a third of our referrals come from Carl. And most of those come from occupational health. So it's been gunshot survivors. And so we again, work in partnership. We use that wraparound model. So we'll have a social worker and we'll look at every single life domain. So physical, vocational, emotional or whatever. And if there is, so we'll help you sort out what kind of work makes sense for you. We'll help you navigate if you had a job and you don't know how to navigate and ask for time off. We'll help with those advocacy skills. If there are supports that we can put in place, if there are transportation barriers, because maybe you were driving and you need some additional help, we'll help you understand how to work with MTD and Disability Service so that those kinds of supports can push in. We try to think about your whole village. So if you have a, a partner that you're involved with, we're trying to think about what works well for your partner or your mom or your extended network. So we take that whole village and make sure, you know, again, it's crisis nursery support. It's working with childcare resources. It's everything that we can think about. And thanks to the Bridge border Sullivan grant that they have to provide housing support for people who've been impacted by COVID. So we've been also able to stabilize housing issues for people who kind of need that bridge. We will, again, we will work with anybody. We work with all the townships, with everybody to stabilize that housing, to look for that employment, to help make sure that you also get all of the wound care, wellness care, all of those things are in place. Because many people don't know how to advocate for home-based care, how to get a parent as the care provider or a partner. So we're thinking about that whole 360.
Okay, I guess another question I have is, is it, is, is, is your program, do you work with people that are, are single, like they don't have anybody? And older than, you know, 16, people that, that are, that are older, that have also been impacted in that way?
So yes, so actually, most of the people that we work with are older than 16. We actually don't, right, like most of the people, right, because we, because most of the time we're working in a village. So we'll work with caregivers and folks, but then we'll work with young adults and adults. We haven't had a lot of referrals that are just sort of completely disconnected to anybody in the community. Most of the time there's someone in the village, either here or in Chicago or Indianapolis or Bloomington or Danville. And so we try to reconnect you to your village. And then we have something called our Wisdom Leader Program. So when we work and when we encounter folks who are maybe a little bit older or grandparents who need some, what we call it peer support, you know, because they're feeling stressed out or like unsafe or whatever. We have our wisdom leaders who are available to talk, be that listening ear, to sort of provide some of that just emotional support. Again, using that Psychological First Aid and Skills for Psychological Recovery, our wisdom leaders are available for, for, for our more, you know, mature folks who, you know, are not leaving their homes. We've worked with a lot with Silver Hearts, with Giovanna, and have done some work with her on doing surveys and talking to seniors in Urbana, just really listening well. And what they told us was we're feeling alone and isolated and disconnected. And so our wisdom leaders have really made a commitment to be those listening ears. But also link people to like care and resources and promote social connectedness. So right, however they can do that. So we, we partner with everybody.
Okay, so the, 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 the one-off that, let me, you know, a person that has moved here and their family, and I, and I say this because I, I lived in California for 30 years. And I had my blood relatives that lived there actually moved almost as soon as I had moved out there. I only had a couple. But I basically had no, you know, no, no, no supportive. If something tragic had happened to me, there was nobody there that would have been able to really help me. So I guess my question is if, 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 and I know that there are people here that live in Urbana, you know, folks that, that moved here for job training or, or, you know, they're students or whatever. And they're totally disconnected in the sense that they have no family support. They have nobody here. And if something traumatic were to happen to them, if they would be able in using your services or, or, you know, if you have things set up, if you have something set up for that particular type of situation.
So, you know, that's part of the fantasy when we have full capacity. So right, we have a little bit of help to do that, to do some of our senior support, but definitely not enough. I have people who want to do that kind of work. And I will also say, if you've ever been to one of our Community Violence or Neighborhood Safety Meetings, we always have information about where resources are, where to go, where to be involved in. We have always like probably a plethora of reach out to family services. This is where senior services, and we're really trying to deepen those kind of messages more. So we're always stuffing stuff into a bag or giving things in a hand so that if we can get you to come out. And then when we are getting ready for a neighborhood safety meeting, we go door to door knocking on doors. So we, right, we could show you, right, like we more, more than once, we've gone door to door, handing things, telling people, asking people to, you know, just reach out and not to sort of suffer alone.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We have time for a couple more questions, Grace.
Thanks. Sorry, I just wanted to add a quick comment, if I may. I apologize to Cory Mallory, who's the Workforce Development Supervisor for First Followers thing. Sorry Cory, I saw a hand up in the audience. I thought you were coming in for audience participation. James said only Dr. Parnell was presenting. But he had in the chat real quick, he just wanted to say hi and add to Dr. Regina's presentation and say that he's been working on mentoring these young men as that supervisor since 2019 and been working on the houses on Louisiana and Cottage Courts. And sorry Cory that we didn't add you in, but I just wanted to include that.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, if you could send your presentations to cityclerk@urbanaillinois.us, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
We thank you very much for presenting tonight and for all that you do. Okay, we will move on to public input. And last week there were some questions about public inputs and the role of council and our council rules. So I wanted to summarize that again for the council and for the public before we start the public input portion of the agenda. To summarize, the Open Meetings Act requires that a public body provide an opportunity for members of the public to address public officials. And that requirement also provides for public bodies to establish rules governing the process. Those rules address time, for example, how much time is allowed for input placed on the agenda, and manner, which is more related to content issues related to comments. Per our council rules, which are included with every agenda, our goal is to foster respect for the meeting process and respect for all people participating as members of the public body, city staff and members of the general public. Personal attacks, bullying, abusive comments are not condoned. They have a significant negative impact on employee and volunteer morale. They contribute to a hostile meeting environment, discourage public participation, really add another level of unnecessary stress to people working to maintain services and basic privacy. Council members do have the opportunity to correct inaccurate statements or publicly discourage or condemn bullying or abusive behavior or profanity during the council comment period in each meeting. That's the part of the meeting that's entitled Council Input and Communications. The current public input rules also specifically provide that obscene or profane comments are unacceptable. And they may lead to a speaker being muted if the profanity continues. As the providing officer, you can raise a point of order with a speaker to warn them to stop the profanity. The council member may also raise a point of order with presiding officer to request they provide a verbal warning to a speaker utilizing profanity. If that continues, the speakers will be informed or may be informed. They could send the remainder of the remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record. So to summarize, council members, presiding officers do have the ability to correct inaccurate statements, to discourage or condemn abusive or bullying input during the council comment period. And you can raise a point of order directly at profanity occurring during a meeting. All this being said, however, in support of First Amendment right to speech, we are largely dependent on members of the public being willing to respect the process and the people involved in our meetings. Responsibility for content of public input lies with the speaker. The responsibility for time and place for public input lies with the council. So again, I would ask speakers, participants in the meeting to please respect the process and respect the people and avoid personal attacks and abusive comments. Thank you. So we will go on to public input and we will begin with Alan Max Axelrod.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Thank you so much. So I'm speaking to you today in my capacity as the campaign lead for No Amor Shutoffs, a zero-dollar coalition of 53 member organizations spanning the state of Illinois, north, south, east, west, with member organizations in Indiana and Iowa. Last week, we passed our 11th resolution since April, calling on Governor JB Pritzker to act in the McLean County Democratic Party. And we have a similar resolution that has been allegedly agreed to be included in the Champaign County Board Agenda this week. One of the things that these resolutions that are updated do, that the resolution that Urbana, being the first body to pass a resolution in 2021, again, thank you for doing so. The distinction between those resolutions and the resolutions we're passing now is in addition to advocating for state-level protections, they are advocating for federal-level protections. As I have mentioned before, the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act of 2021, again, through the legislative cycles, it's probably going to get an updated name, provides a statewide suspension of, or a countrywide suspension of utility shut-offs, restores people's utilities, erases their utility debt. There is money appropriated to the utilities to do that, both corporate and municipal, and provides additional consumer protections to folks. We are in the winter moratorium currently. And I think that some folks may have forgotten that our winter moratorium conditions were adopted earlier last year in September, right before we had 81,000 utility shut-offs in the space of nine weeks. We are in the winter moratorium now. People are still being shut off now. Utility shut-offs are allowed if people do not enter into a deferred payment agreement and if the 24-hour forecast is above freezing. And a lot of people don't even know that they can enter into those deferred payment agreements. The Utility Disconnection Avoidance Program that in part the City of Urbana helps to pressure for its creation by the governor, by the governor, excuse me, helped in an automatic capacity our most vulnerable households. And we, since that program was, was expired, I'm trying to restrain my cat, sorry for the awkward speech there. Since that program expired at the end of June, we saw COVID caseloads increase two weeks later. That's a trend we've seen three times. We have been over 2,000 cases a day per the seven-day daily average of new COVID cases since August 3rd, over 130 days ago. And with Omicron arriving of still some uncertain qualities about it, with utility shut-offs happening, which the National Consumer Law Center said is one of the most subtle, pernicious and immediate health risks to folks during this pandemic. I ask humbly that the City of Urbana consider a resolution to include the federal demands or letter, really whatever in writing would help to advocate for it, for the passage of the Maintaining Access to Essential Services Act. There are legislators in Illinois who could be added as sponsors. And I believe that this is something that we can do to lead and to continue to lead for positive proactive changes in a way that is economically sensible. So please follow up with me on that. I will send an email and follow up as well. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next up is Cory.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh yeah. Hello, this is, my name's Cory Mallory from the First Followers. I'm one of the supervisors for the Go Mad program. And I've been a part of the program for, since 2019. And I just wanted to add to something that Regina was saying as far as we are trying to connect with these young men and mentor them and give them something to look back on and to have something also to have some skills under their belt to, you know, kind of, kind of go back on and also learn a trade and have some skills to go forward with, you know, and also some gainful employment with us. So I've been a part of this group since 2019, like I said. But yeah, it's been very helpful as well for me. You know, me being involved with these young men, it allows me to be able to engage with them, understand where they are in It allows me to be able to engage with them, understand where they are in their personal lives and some of the trauma that they've dealt with, because some of the young men, they are also either, you know, brothers of someone who's been affected by gang violence or still are being affected by gang violence. Or mothers who have been a part of, you know, um, uh, the community who are involved with the First Followers and they've lost their sons to gang violence. I think that, like, what we're doing is, is very needful and very helpful to the community. Um, I've been a part of different communities, Oklahoma, where they've had a dream center built for, you know, uh, young families and, or, or just families in general who are less fortunate. And they've been able to provide, you know, food, clothing, shelter, different things like that, you know, low income families. And, um, it was a very, um, it was on a pretty big scale, but I could see the, the need for what we do here in Champaign and helping the, the young men, which is part of what I'm doing with the Go Mad program, I can see a need for it because, the young men that are kind of, you know, involved in some of these situations are, they don't see, they don't see an end out, you know what I mean? And they're already dealing with situations and trauma and, um, you know, broken homes and broken families and, and on top of that, it's, there's, there's, there's violence in the community. So it's, it's, it's just, it's almost like a hopeless type of situation that they kind of see and feel. And it's just perpetuating it. And so I just feel like, I just wanted to add that, um, what, what I feel like we're doing with the First Followers is bringing these kids into a safe space and, and, and allowing them an opportunity to release their, you know, their, their fears and their, and their, and their inhibitions to, to be and try to do something better than themselves, you know what I mean? And that's what we've been trying to do, gutting these houses out and building them back up. And like Joy, uh, like Grace said, uh, doing the gardening and things like that. And a lot of the young men have gotten into the gardening, even though they felt like, oh man, that's something that girls should be doing. And, but, you know, I also kind of took a little part in that. And, uh, I just feel like it was, it was very engaging and very, uh, we were able to kind of connect with them and, you know, talk with them and, and it kind of helped them, you know, release their feelings from, um, gang violence or, or community violence and, you know, feeling threatened, you know what I mean? As a young black man in the community.
Cory, your time, your time is up, but thank you very much.
Yes, okay. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is James Tiger Corbin.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, who allowed me to speak. I am here tonight just to reiterate a lot of what you heard already by presentations. I think that, like Regina was saying earlier, trauma is an emotional response to a negative, impactful event. Now, we have, about us working directly with these individuals in these programs, and I work across many programs. A lot of these individuals do not understand they're in trauma or they experienced trauma. So it's critical to do this get to know you phase. You want to get to, get, you want to get involved with them. Get to know them. That way then you could start unpacking the trauma. You got to go back. And we'd have had discussions in our healing circle sometimes when we talked to these young men, you know, they, some of these, they, they never shared certain events, you know, uh, violent events that happened, that they witnessed. And they was able to, wow, man, I didn't know that they, that I didn't know that affected me that. So creating that safe space is necessary in order to move forward. That is critical. We had young men come in the program and with Grace's help, from different neighborhoods who were into it, uh, you know, violently, back and forth. And at first, they was like, you know, I don't want to work with that guy. But once you create this safe space and you give them a skill set to show them there's more than just what's going on in this neighborhood. You know, once you create all this, you put these components together along with counseling, like Karen said, with the wraparound service as well as talking to these individuals, teaching them about, uh, I helped teach the financial literacy part, uh, how to build credit. This is how you build credit. This is how you go about buying a house. You know, it's not done like it is on TV or in a rap song. These, once you open up all these different aspects for these men, they see the world different. Now they interact, like the Go Mad team, the small team we have now, they're from different areas. At first, they wasn't really comfortable with each other, but eventually with Cory's help, they, they fell in line, everything fall in line. And again, we keep looking for a one-stop bullet or one-stop action to stop violence, whereas this is a multi-layer component. This is not done just by one individual and it jumps. You know, um, we had a talk, you know, talking about, well, why don't they just tell them where they at and turn them in? Well, you'll be turning in the whole neighborhood because who's affected by that last violent act? His friends, there be the next one. This thing is a mental virus. Gun violence is a mental virus. It does not just one person that you could point them out and get him, that don't, that don't work that way. Anybody I say who think that way are looking at it as static. Once you arrest this individual and that group is gone, someone else steps in to take the place. So we're going to need, like Karen said, a coordinated, across-the-board effort, going against, going with other agencies to fight this thing as well as get them something to do. There's nothing to do here for these, a lot of these young men. So they, so they self-medicate drinking. All these things are tied to trauma-related events. You know, drinking, drugs, all these. We got to, uh, we got to create more opportunity for them. And that's my time and I'm up. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is SN. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Hi, SN is Sarah Nixon. Um, hello, City Council. Um, I just want to say, um, that I feel gratitude to the City Council, to Chandra Bishop and Grace Wilkins for bringing in Karen Sims to give her presentation. Um, I know Karen personally as a mentor. I know that, excuse me, I know that Karen pours her, pours all of herself into all of what she does. And I know that for CU Try, um, Champion Urbana Trauma Resilience Initiative, the need to compete for funding is so critical and so time-consuming. Yet Karen is Urbana-Champaign's premier community trauma specialist. And I think she should be put on the city payroll and that Urbana would be fortunate to have her full-time at the helm. I and many others have attended training sessions led by Karen and engaging closely, hands-on with her organization, CU Try, helped me process trauma that I've experienced due to law enforcement and judicial failures. CU Try validated my trauma and gave me a space to start feeling human again or feeling like a human being again after the dehumanization that I endured by systems that should have, but did not protect my child from sexual assault. For a good portion of 2019, I chaired the Empathy Box Working Group, CU Try, which brainstormed and organized the logistics and contents of what we decided to call the Empathy Box, a box filled with comfort items that CU Try would deliver to families and victims of gun violence in the community. That concept was envisioned by Karen as a care package designed to offer comfort, resources, and support for all the people impacted by community violence. And it might seem to be a small gesture, but it was a human touch at a time of crisis, tragedy, and trauma. Karen's vision is distinguished by a full-spectrum compassion perspective. She respects and responds to the trauma experienced by all involved in gun violence, from the victims to first responders, to law enforcement, to shooters and their families too. So I think I'd just like to say resources are key. Again, I think Urbana needs to hire Ms. Sims and fully, at the very least, fully fund her vision. Let's use American Rescue Plan funds to invest in existing community treasures. And I don't think you could do better than funding Ms. Sims and her organization, which are both priceless. So thanks. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next up is First Followers. Please state your name, the speaker.
So my name is Marlon Mitchell. And thanks again to the council for allowing us this space just to talk about a little something. So I just wanted to kind of elaborate on, on the presentation that was given by Dr. Regina Parnell in regards to the young men and the program that we've been running. So it kind of, uh, just the history of it, it kind of organically, it came about organically because what we do is that, as everybody knows, that we're a reentry program that's situated here in Champaign, but we provide services to the entire Champaign County. But organically, it transpired just through conversations that we were having with young men that were coming in for drop-in center services. And most often times it was community, uh, community service hours because they were on probation. And so through those times that we spent with the young men and coming in, looking for those services to, uh, to meet the criteria for their, for their, um, community service, we would just ask them different questions and just kind of build a relationship with them. And from the questioning and just watching and getting to know them, oftentimes there was a, there was a certain similarity between most of them. Most of them were unemployed. Most of them had dropped out or been kicked out of school and they were just kind of floating around. So through honest conversation, one of the things that we did, we were able to just ask them, what do you want? What are you looking for? What do you want out of life? Where would you start? And from there, we kind of built the program from there. And I can say over there, that was back in 2017 when we first started this initiative. And so we're in our fifth cohort of the initiative. And so just to give you some numbers, because I, I do believe one of the council members were asking about numbers. So me personally, I had done an intake in over 60 different individuals who have come into the program over the last five or six years. Some of them have stuck and stayed a little bit longer than others, but it's always been a challenge to have, you know, first of all, the capacity to pay people to do this type of work, but also more importantly, to pay the individuals who come in to do this type of work. So fast forward into here in 2020, 2021, I should say, one of the things that we've been fortunate enough is to be recognized as a chodo for the City of Champaign, City of Urbana, and all the surrounding areas in the 217 area code for Champaign County. And so what that has allowed us to do is partner with the City of Urbana, the City of Champaign, and all these other municipalities in the, in, in, in the context of acquiring space of dilapidated housing, vacant lots, and different things of that nature where that we can, we can acquire these spaces so that it'll be a training ground. And so with that being a training ground, we have had community members who have the skill set that do come in and train the young men in building construction trades and the different skills that come along with that. So as they start to acquire these skill sets, the most important part of it is this. It's not only that, but it's also being able to use our program as a mechanism to get to know who they are, where they're coming from, and what's their next step in life. And so as we get to build these relationships, you start to unpack all these different things that have layers and layers and layers of trauma, uh, immaturity, and just different things that they don't know. But I think with the Go Mad program, it's been a very successful program because I can honestly say out of all the different men that have come into the program, I still have some form of contact with them. But it's always been a challenge to fund the folks that are doing the work. And more importantly, like I said, providing stipends for the work that's being done. Go Mad, what I like to see is, is very transformational. And what I've seen is that guys come into the program from day one and they mature into a place where now they have a direction in life and now they're starting to unpack what they want to do with themselves moving on, moving forward. So again, I appreciate you all for your time and just working with the City of Urbana on different initiatives. And, uh, we're just looking to build capacity and continue to move forward with this. But as some of the other callers said and Karen has said as well, this is not an overnight fix. This is something that we have to continue to use the resources that we have in our community and provide the necessary resources for those that's doing this work in order to build up and build out and capture more and serve as intervention and prevention of what's happening here currently. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlon. Okay. Does anyone else wish to address the Urbana City Council? Please raise your hand if you do. All right. I don't see any hands raised. We'll move on to reports from the Committee of the Whole. James?
Yes, I can report from the Committee of the Whole. That the following items were placed on the consent agenda. Resolution number 2021-12-047R, Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for West Windsor Road Resurfacing Project, and Resolution Number 2021-12-048R, Resolution for Improvement Under the Illinois Highway Code, State Motor Fuel Tax for Phila Road, Colorado Avenue, and Anderson Street Resurfacing Project. And Resolution Number 2021-12-49-049R, A Resolution Approving a Funding Agreement, CU at Home Winter Shelter. Ordinance Number 2021-12-049, An Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, Maintaining the Number of Class P Liquor Licenses for Isaiah Salem LLC, Doing Business as Black Fox, at 602 North Cunningham Avenue. And Ordinance Number 2021-12-050, An Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, Increasing the Number of Class R and T Liquor Licenses for Sakura Japanese Cuisine Incorporated, Doing Business as Sakura Japanese Cuisine, at 132 West Main Street. And Ordinance Number 2021-12-051, An Ordinance Amending Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43, Increasing the Number of Class GC Liquor Licenses for, uh, We, WeLocavor.com, Doing Business as Homegrown, at 2600 Stone Creek Boulevard. And finally, Resolution Number 2021-12-050R, A Resolution Authorizing Acceptance of an Illinois Arts Council Agency, IACA Grant for Arts and Culture Program Operating Support. Nice move.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Chandra. With a quick, please call the roll.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
That motion passes. And I apologize, I realize I skipped over item E, Council Input and Communications. So if,
Yes.
if you will indulge it, we will go back to that. And if anybody on the City Council wished to make a comment, you have up to three minutes. Chandra?
Yes, I just want to convey my, my gratitude. Yes, I just want to convey my gratitude for the presenters tonight and those who spoke around the same issues. This, this is, this sort of thing is what I have been wanting to support, wanting to see the city of Urbana support. We have great initiatives that are going already in our community. They just need the, the capacity built and expanded so that they can reach more. And I would, I would love to see, see us support them in that effort. That's, that's pretty much all, so.
Okay, Jay?
Similarly, I'd also like to thank our presenters again for tonight and thank especially Grace and Mr. Andres well for making sure we had these important conversations tonight. I think it's important to keep in mind that while some of these programs take a while to have a long-term impact, it is worth recognizing that there is an immediate effect that these kinds of resources have and, you know, have been having and can continue to have in our community if, if we are investing in these resources that actually address the root causes of violence in our community. So grateful for the work that is being done and would also like to make sure that we are keeping our local experts in mind as we are looking for solutions to our community problems.
Any other comments? Grace?
Thank you. Don't want to be too repetitive, but I was going to say the same things that have already been said. Well, thank you to our presenters and, you know, support, supporting their expertise and experience and realizing that these things take a lot of time and a lot of hard work to get going. And I feel optimistic that there are already grassroots organizations, very connected to the community, that already have a few years of the groundwork underway. So I find that very encouraging and agree that I would love to be able to support them more. Like I said, a little bit with my work with First Followers have really seen the importance of those relationships and building trust and that it makes a big difference versus, I don't know, a more generic program that might not be able to have those long-term trusting relationships. And I think that that makes a really big difference. And it's very meaningful working with some of these individuals, some of these young people, and realizing, you know, something we take for granted that could be a huge skill. Like I love resumes. I'm just a resume nerd. And, you know, some of these young men, we're going to a job fair and one of them asked me, what's a resume? And it's like, oh, honey, we're going to write a resume. And, you know, things like that, that we can just take for granted. And I think it's really great when we can all throw in support and different skills. And I think it's really impressive what these groups have been doing without that kind of systemic support and funding and definitely support, further supporting them. Thank you.
Any other council member comments? Okay, we'll move back to the regular agenda. Thank you, James, for the report out of the committee.
All right. So next up, the committee passed ordinance number 2021-11-048, an ordinance revising the fiscal year 2022 annual budget, also known as Budget Amendment Number Four, and I believe this was recommended for approval as well.
Yes, and I would ask if Elizabeth Hannan could be promoted, if she's not already, to be a panelist?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? I'm looking for Elizabeth. Is Elizabeth attending? Oh, there she is. Great. Okay, any questions for Elizabeth? Grace?
Thank you. I have two. I'll start with this one. And I did ask this last week, and I'm sorry, I've still been trying to understand and didn't have a chance to call and figure it out this week. But I know if you could just explain again about the Community Development Grants Fund and the administrative and planning costs, because I do understand that going toward that time. But my question is, is that position grants funded? Or if not, then where does the allocated pay for wages go when there's a grant paying for those services?
I believe Sheila could answer that.
Yeah, Grace, if I remember correctly, this is about the home ARP funds?
Yes.
Okay. So that administrative cost, HUD allows us a set amount. And the way that we do it internally is every day I keep a timesheet. The grant staff keeps a timesheet of where they spend their time. And then quarterly, we bill our time to those specific activities. And so we know coming up that we're going to be spending time on the home ARP program, although hopefully, you know, not a huge chunk. We'll be able to hire a consultant to, to help with part of it. But we don't have any salary budget set aside for that particular line item. So we have to allocate funding there. It's not going to increase salaries of existing staff. It's just going to allow us to allocate our time to where we're actually spending it. Does that help?
Yes, I guess I'm still just a little confused, but it sounds like, so there's a budgeted salary that doesn't encompass all of the work that's being done? Is that correct then?
We have to budget our time, like when we're audited by the city auditors and by HUD, they want to see what specifically we're spending our time on. So I have a timesheet that's got CDBG admin and home admin, emergency solutions grant time. There's about twelve to fourteen different activities or tasks. And then, like I said, daily, Brayden and I attach our time to where we've spent our time. And that way, all of those auditors can make sure that we're really allocating our time to how we really spent it. And, you know, like I said, since home ARP money is new, we don't have that salary line item. And so in order to be able to bill my time to it, we had to add it as part of this budget amendment.
And so then is all of the time for the community development grants, or is that the correct thing? But anyway, for those positions, is it all based off of the time for those grant activities? There's not like, are they just paying a salary?
We are paid a set amount, but then we are reimbursed or we are billing the grants, specific grants for the actual time that we spent. And there are limitations, you know, on how much we can do. So like emergency solutions grant, there's a set dollar amount that we can't exceed. There's a certain amount for the CDBG grant that we can't exceed. So, you know, it's important that we, we track our time to how we actually spend it and then charge it back quarterly.
Okay, thank you. My other question was just curious about the meeting and agenda software. I was just curious a little bit about, you know, maybe a little what it is, what are some advantages? And maybe if this is something new that should be helpful, or if this is something we already are using?
Carol could answer that.
So we're, this meeting and agenda software is to automate the process of building an agenda. So it creates an approval flow for items that are going to be reviewed. So a staff member would submit it. And then rather than us passing around a bunch of emails with possible different versions of council reports and so forth, this automates it. And once it gets its final approval, then it goes into a queue. And basically, the clerk just will, it will almost self-populate the, the agenda. So it's, it's going to streamline a lot of our staff efforts and, and help us avoid, you know, dropping stitches and, you know, have, it'll help with version control too. So we're, we're all pretty excited about it.
And so then it sounds like this is new, that's not being used currently?
It's new.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion by James, a second by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
You're muted, Sharice.
Yes.
All right.
Sorry.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes. That motion passes. James?
All right, next, ordinance number 2021-12-052, an ordinance levying taxes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. I believe this was just referred to the city council without recommendation.
Would you like to move approval?
I move approval.
Okay, there's second.
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Shandra. Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
That motion passes.
All right, next, ordinance number 2021-12-053, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate the tax levy for the general corporate fund for the tax year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022. I believe this also was referred without recommendation, and I, I so move.
There's second, please.
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And finally, ordinance number 2021-12-054, an ordinance directing the Champaign County Clerk to abate a portion of the 2021-related general obligation bonds, Series 2014, and this was passed the city council with a recommendation for approval. So a motion from the committee of the whole.
There's second.
I'll second.
Moved by James, seconded by Shandra. Further discussion? Will clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Quisenberry?
Yes.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Wilkin?
Yes.
Ms. Colacetti?
Yes.
That motion passes. And that concludes the agenda items. Thank you, James. Next item, reports of special committees. We have none. Reports of officers?
I just have two things. One is a reminder that on, a reminder for all of the council members. And then to the extent that the public isn't aware, we will continue the council strategic goal setting that we started on with Kevin and James, but Kevin won't be with us. We're finishing up the action items for the different strategies, continuing to work in the small groups. Elizabeth and I will meet with James. Thank you for your email earlier. James can't be there on Wednesday, so we were in a small group, Elizabeth Hannan, James Quisenberry, myself, so we'll meet separately, which we can do since it's only one council member, to work on the action items there. And then you should be receiving, if you haven't already, another poll for a final session in January with Kevin to, to as a, work as a total group to finalize the council strategic goals and the action steps that, you know, that we agreed to, or that you all agreed to collectively. So Wednesday night, starting at 5:30 at ILEUS, that, that, that this week's session will reconvene. And then the other thing is, last week, a couple of the council members asked for an update on our partnership with Rosecrance, the CCRT. And Lieutenant Corey Coker and the team members will be in attendance to make a presentation at the council meeting next Monday night on the 20th.
And that's the crisis co-responder team. Grace, did you have a question?
Yes. Thanks for the update. And you said that this Wednesday, it's at 3:30 to 5:30, right?
No, it's at 5:30.
It'll start at 5:30. Okay. I had the doodle poll thing wrong. Okay, good to know. Thank you. And I was wondering if there was a presentation or I can ask questions about this failure to comply report, if this is an appropriate time for that?
Sure.
Sheila's here. I think she can answer any questions, I think.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate the update. My understanding, looking back at the ordinance, is that this was the updated ordinance for issuing fines automatically for buildings with code issues, particularly safety and fire safety. And please correct me if that's not the case. And so I appreciate this update and following up on that. And my question was, does it escalate to any further fines or litigation? Like, for example, one of them, you know, has a balance due from 2019, and especially with something such, so important as, you know, fire and building safety. I'm just wondering if there are other steps to kind of enforce this even more?
I'm not sure, Grace. I will reach out to Nick and get an answer in our legal team and then let you know. I'll just indote all councils so everybody gets the same information.
Thank you. And then other reports, I can just throw out some ideas for the executive. I think it would also, I'd be interested in reports from the Human Rights and Equity Officer about housing enforcement. I think that's an interesting topic that we've all been kind of curious to get an update on. And possibly, Community Engagement Officer, just about community engagement and whatever efforts are going on in that department are some reports that I'd be interested in in the future.
Okay.
And thank you.
Any other reports of officers? I did want to share one item that came in today is there's a really important bill working its ways in the House of Representatives, federal House of Representatives right now. It's HR 5735. It's passed the Senate. This is legislation that's been promoted by the U.S. Conference of Mayors that would give additional flexibility to ARPA spending related to calculating revenue losses, kind of cut some of the red tape there. It expands the use for infrastructure. And the third really important component of this bill is that it would allow ARPA funds to be used for emergency relief from natural disasters or the negative economic impact of natural disasters. And in light of the devastating tornadoes that tore through four states this past weekend, this is especially important. So, so I've already reached out to our congressional representative. And according to Congressman Davis's office, currently he is signed on as a cosponsor and he is currently the only cosponsor in Illinois congressional delegation. So if you have contacts among other representatives, it would be great to reach out. And I can send the information to the council members. Your advocacy would be much appreciated.